Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, licentious and just for all.
Don't beat it.
Oh, I will. Okay. She was actually here.
I got her.
Okay. Chancellor has the notice of this meeting been posted?
Yes, I certified it was posted in accordance with the law.
And before we go further, I just wanted to recognize the newest member of our board, Rebecca Bresson. Welcome, you're very welcome, and we're happy to have you, and you know, you're here to enjoy the fun, so enjoy yourself. With that, do we have public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
I would like to please call to the podium Dr. John Bergdoff.
Good evening. I am John Bergduff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College. I cannot let this evening go by without first acknowledging the news that our chancellor will be retiring this summer. It is too soon to say goodbye, and the AFT plans an appropriate tribute before then. However, for today, on behalf of the union, I want to briefly express our appreciation to Dr. Stephen Head. Steve, by every conceivable measure, this college is stronger and healthier than when you took over. You have moved us forward even in the face of flood and pestilence. You have issued in an era of collaboration and cooperation between employees and administration, replacing a previous time of intense confrontation that preceded you. Faculty, staff, administrators, and students are all in a better place because of your tenure, and for that, we are grateful. In November, I gave the board an initial overview of the results of the climate survey that AFT conducted in the fall. As we have read through the literally thousands of comments we received, we see some themes of interest, and I want to focus on one of those this evening. Both faculty and staff express interest in more flexible work options. This interest reflects trends all across the economy away from the old model of eight to five, Monday through Friday, in a building. Our mission at Lone Star College is radically different from that of an oil company or a bank. Can an intensely human-oriented institution function in an environment in which not everyone is in the same place at the same time? Fortunately for us, some community colleges across the country are already exploring that question and trying out new and innovative models. Today, I want to highlight one of those models as an example, and perhaps a starting place for a conversation here. Dallas College is a community college system similar in size, mission, and student demographics to us. This past fall, they instituted new work options focusing specifically on their staff and administrators. Dallas College uses the term flex work rather than remote work or work from home because they are implementing a total of four options different from the traditional model. These options include a 40-hour on-campus presence but compressed into fewer days, a presence eight hours per day but at non-traditional times, a complete work-from-home option, and a hybrid option in which workers work some days on-site and other days at home. Not all of these formats will work for all job positions within the college. Dallas has outlined a detailed process of discernment and continuing review for both employees and supervisors to see what options best meet the needs of individual departments and the students they serve. Dallas College prepared a summary document in which they consciously outlined the benefits they expect to experience from adopting a flex model, flex work model, and I will quote from their statement. So this is a quote. According to the Society of Human Resources Management, employees perform better and maintain higher levels of well-being when work-family-life concerns are reflected in policies and practices. Additionally, supervisor support for those concerns is essential to the contribution of a positive employee environment and organizational outcomes. Organizations not only report higher levels of employee attraction, retention, and engagement, but may also realize cost savings and better space utilization. Employees experience well-being, job satisfaction, and higher productivity as they are less likely to be absent because of illness or personal demands. Further, students can receive services outside of normal business hours and obtain support without traveling to campus. And that ends the quote. At this time, Dallas is not addressing faculty, but the nature of work has changed for us as well. Even face-to-face classes have more of an online presence, and students need and expect our attention in the evenings and on weekends. Old assumptions about faculty being physically present on campus four or five days a week no longer benefit today's students and endanger the faculty's ability to maintain productive and balanced lives. With Dallas and other models available, the AFT hopes that Lone Star College will engage in the conversation about flexible work options for staff and faculty, and will look for innovative approaches that will benefit our employees, our students, and the college. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
The next one?
Yes, I'd like to call Susan Scruggs, please.
Good evening, Chancellor, and I'm sorry to hear you're retiring. I know you're looking forward to it, though. You're probably most excited about it. And trustees and other Lone Star College employees. I am advocating for some of your taxpayers. And I have been coming here, I guess, since last June, speaking to you about homestead exemption, and they would like for me to give you a message. I'm a precinct chair, I don't know if you're aware of that, in Montgomery County, and the message is, please help. Please help us keep more of our money. We need it. We're working hard to support our families. Some of us have two jobs. The Bureau of Labor Statistics CPI reports that food has increased over 10% in the past 12 months, energy 7.3%, again in the past 12 months, and in all categories, 6.5%. I would like for you folks to hear the cries of your constituents. Right now, you're giving 1%, and you have the ability to increase that to 20%. I'm asking you to put this on your agenda for next month and to vote on it and let it prevail, and let the people in your community that have been supporting you all these years keep more of their money. Thank you.
Trustee Stonema?
Yes, yes.
This is trustee Wilson.
Go ahead, trustee Wilson.
Did I miss roll call?
We didn't, we didn't do a roll call. We could do a roll call.
I was just checking, but also I wanted to speak to the homestead exemption. Is there any updates from the last time when the constituents came in and spoke? Like, what's, do we, Jennifer, I know you spoke about it last time, is there a game plan?
Trustee Wilson, let me recommend that we hold a roll call vote until after public, we still have one or, one or two more public comments, then we can do the roll call vote, if that's acceptable to you, yeah?
No, I was just asking, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it, because I know I kind of came in a little late. Okay.
Who's next?
Sorry, one, one final public commenter, I'd like to call Tina Orbaugh, please.
Hi. I'm Tina Orbaugh, and I've worked at Lone Star College for about eight years, and I've worked in Montgomery County as a teacher for 27 years. So I'm, I don't understand why we don't have a 20% homestead tax exemption. I'm thinking it would be in most places automatic. It's almost like you're stealing the money away from the people in the community, which need it very bad because of the food prices going up and gas going up. And I've noticed that y'all got raises, teachers got raises. I think it's time for the citizens to get a raise. It's bad enough that our taxes are so, so high, our property taxes are so high, people are moving out because they can't afford where they're living anymore. Even after their house is paid, the taxes are just so much higher than they thought because the prices of the homes have gone up, so. But anyways, that's, wanted to have you vote from your heart and realize that these people in the community need a 20% tax exemption, and would appreciate it if you could look down into your heart and make the right decision. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
No, sir, that concludes the public comment.
Okay, with the recommendation of trustee Wilson, we'll now have a roll call vote. Yeah, so.
Board chair also asked the question about the homestead.
Yeah, my, my. Go ahead. We're just gonna do a roll call. Okay. Trustee King?
Present.
Trustee Maria?
Present.
Trustee vote? Trustee Bouchard? Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Wilson?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
And trustee Stonema, I'm here. So trustee Salivar is, is absent. Go ahead.
And trustee Wilson, I wanted to acknowledge the question that you asked during public comment. The item that was the subject of those comments is not noticed on tonight's agenda, and so the Open Meetings Act prevents the board from engaging in discussion on that topic, but it can certainly be noticed for a later agenda for board discussion at that time.
That's fine. I was, I was just making a comment after, you know, because this is the, I don't know how many times they've came up here, so I wanted to see what has changed from last year, because that was the thing that the chancellor spoke of, that he would be updating, and they would be going over that portion for the community, but we haven't got any information about it, so I just want to make sure it stays in the forefront and that they don't, you know, that we, that doesn't get overlooked.
Yeah. One, trustee Wilson, we can put, bring that up as an issue and record that as an issue, and I'll talk about that a little later. And then the chancellor just mentioned to me that that's on the agenda also for the February 24th retreat.
Okay. I just wanted to mention, because I hadn't heard anything.
No, but we'll take it as an issue, and we'll take responsibility, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that later, okay?
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor, do we have any special guest introductions?
Yeah, so if Melissa Hinchshaw, is she here? Okay, Desiree, do you want to come up and introduce? So Melissa is over our organizational development and some of our leadership programs, and so, and she reports into Desiree, but.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Chair, trustees, Dr. Head, and attendees. So thank you for allowing us to have a few minutes to recognize organizational development and the accomplishments of our employees participating in learning into professional development throughout the system. So I would like to invite Melissa Hinchshaw, who's the Executive Director of Organizational Development, to come up to the podium and give you a very short overview of Lone Star's professional development programs, and to allow her to recognize the most recent graduates of the Lone Stars Leadership Academy, which is our oldest and longest-running professional development program.
Good evening, Chair Stonema, trustees, chancellor head. I am excited to talk a little bit about organizational development tonight. We offer several programs open to all employees across all Lone Star College locations, specifically for our leadership development. It really strives and emphasizes our cultural beliefs of one LSC and choose learning. Throughout the programs, they cultivate forward-thinking leaders who exhibit integrity, empower others, establish meaningful relationships, think critically, and lead from where they are. We see many of the graduates progress in their current roles, move on to higher leadership positions, and continue to contribute to the success of Lone Star College. We're grateful to chancellor head, Desiree Pravosko, and all of our leadership for their continued support of and investment in these programs and encouraging other employees to go through these opportunities. I'd also like to thank our Director of Leadership Development, Brittany Lang, and Manager of Leadership Development, Cassie Hernandez. They really put a lot into these programs and create transformational opportunities for all the participants. Before recognizing some of our most recent graduates, I just want to give a brief overview of the four leadership development programs. The two that are the newest are our Leadership Edge and Rising Star Institute, and these are really centered around our adjunct faculty, new employees, and part-time staff. They are cohort-based and semester-long programs. The Leadership Education Advancement Program, also referred to as LEAP, is a blend of leadership and career development. Through LEAP, participants engage in activities that are geared toward learning about their own leadership style, developing presenting skills, and their career path exploration, and how to use all of these areas to continue to progress in their positions throughout their career. And as Desiree mentioned, our longest-running leadership development program is the Leadership Academy, sometimes just referred to as the Academy. It's in its 17th year. We just started our 17th cohort, and it has over 500 alumni that have completed the program over the years. It is a year-long program geared toward full-time employees, and they're selected through a very rigorous application, interview, and approval process. While in the program, the fellows engage in relationship-building discussions with Lone Star College leadership, complete a 360 assessment process, connect with the coach, and collaborate on a pod group project that addresses real challenges and opportunities specific to Lone Star College. The academy prepares individuals for future service to the college, to the success of our students, and to our local and global communities. The 2022 cohort celebrated their successful completion of the program in December, where the groups presented their pod projects, and they also participated in an awards ceremony to celebrate that success. We thank the over 90 friends, family, and colleagues that joined in that celebration with us. So right now, I'd like to introduce the 2022 cohort, who is also, you can see their picture up, and I think most are joining virtually. If any are in the room, I invite them to stand when I call their names, and we'll hold applause till the end of all names. So 2022 Lone Star College Leadership Academy graduates are Sam Ream Ahmed, Lindsay Brockhan, Jessica R. Chambers, Rachel Covey, Jason Curley, Kate Dumont, Anthony Frelick, Dr. Melissa Dawn Gatlin, Dr. Abigail Heller, Dr. Alicia Jack Kuharsky, Lori Moyer, Dr. Hamika Nanjia, Irina Naumova Nali, Mohammed Nazam, Peyton Miller, Dr. Carolina Redman, Christopher Reed, Jill Rivera, Acitha T. Silva, Cindy Sledge, Kendra Johnson, Shalandra Jones, Dr. Ulysses Brian Mack, Shawnee Wilson, Katrina Wingfield. So please join me in congratulating our graduates. Thank you for your time and for your support of these programs.
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, before you, have any, how many employees every year come through one of our programs, do you know, roughly?
Roughly around 30, 25 to 30. Last year's cohort was 25. This year, we actually have 31.
What about all the programs that we have, all the leadership programs?
All the leadership programs, so in all, it would probably be close to, because we have a couple semesters around 200 employees that go through these programs each year.
We have quite a bit of activity in our leadership program at all levels, I might add, staff, faculty.
Yes, there's something for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Stonema, could I have the mic for a minute?
Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you. Dr. Head and to your team, I forgot what campus I was attending one day, but Nicole was giving a presentation to the academy on the foundation and the benefits and how employees can participate and how important it is, and they grabbed me out of the hall to come in as a trustee, just to say hello and, and address the group for a minute or two, and you could see the engagement, the excitement that they have, and it's very real, and they devote a lot of time to it. They had been there for several hours that day. Yeah, it's a good program, and we're growing our future leaders within Lone Star, and I appreciate what y'all are doing with it, really do, saw it firsthand.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, next on the agenda is workshop presented by Ms. Kalisha Wright. She's from the Office of Diversity and Strategy.
So just a little background over this, so Kalisha was hired, when?
Two years ago.
What, 20, when?
Yeah, February 2021.
Okay, two years ago? It seems like she's been here forever, but so she started right about COVID, and so what we were trying to do is focus on our diversity efforts, and I, Kalisha and her staff, and she's got a number of them here, I think have done a terrific job in what I think is an awareness of some of the issues, and she's been very professional. You know, what we're trying to point out to people is the right thing to do, and that's our, part of our culture, we're very diverse here, and so we value that in different ways, and she's going to go through some of the activities that we've had. I will tell you, I think the reception's been very positive, and that's, that's coming from me, you'd have to talk to other people, but it's very important to me, to our culture, that we value the diversity and making sure that we're trying to do the right thing all the time, and I cannot say enough good things about Kalisha. If you did not see this, Harris County Commissioners approved a $500,000 grant for the disparity study, and so that's an aspirational study for us, and I'm quoting, Kalisha uses that word, so we know about the percentage of minority vendors that we have. What I don't know is, is that good, bad, or what? And so let's just say if the number is 25%, and we've been working on this for some time, we've had, we've had an office that has outreach, I just don't know, we don't know how many vendors there are, and so we try to be fair to anybody and everybody, so. So that's, but Kalisha's been leading the efforts on a lot of that, so with that, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Good evening, trustees. Thank you, Chairman Sturman, and hello to all of my Lone Star College, Lone Star College colleagues. So thank you so much for hearing, hearing the presentation from the Office of Diverse Equity Inclusion, which has been, as Dr. Head said, two years in the making, and so really excited to come before you all today and just share what our strategic plan is and what the activities the team has done. And so as I, as I shared, the, the office was established two years ago, and our mission is to lead a diversity, equity, and inclusion approach that advances the college's commitment to provide equitable access to opportunities and fosters a sense of belonging for students, employees, and the community. This office started off with myself and Executive Director Laura Cardio. We've expanded due to the investment that the system has put into this, and I just want to take a moment to just ask some of the team members, there are 14, head count 13, that are funded through the system, and then we have one grant-funded position, but just ask my colleagues to stand up from the team, so you could just see half of the team. And so I'm going to go into the presentation and just, just share, share a bit. Prior to me coming on board here at Lone Star College, Lone Star established a core value around diversity, and that value was to ensure that our student population and our employee demographics reflected the community and the difference, the differences in the community, language, culture, ethnicity, social status, and perspectives. And so I wanted to share, I know that I presented to you all earlier in my tenure here at Lone Star College, as we look at our service area, it's, it's increased in its diversity over the last 10, 11 years, and so what we found is that our Hispanic demographics has increased tremendously, and that is reflected in our student population. As we pursue our goals, we know, as we pursue the aspiration of diversity, equity, inclusion, where, you know, we want to look at our employees and faculty, and it's not going to be an automatic transition, but we still want to be cognizant of where we are with our students, where we are with our community, and make sure that we're taking a look at what's happening across our employee and our, and our faculty diversity as well. And so there is a tremendous amount of opportunity to increase the diversity there. So the department was established two years ago. The, the biggest expansion started in December of 2021, and so I came on board in February 2021, when we hired campus diversity managers, and those campus diversity managers hit the ground running at the campuses. Over the summer last summer, we focused on establishing a strategic plan, and that strategic plan has five department goals that I want to share a little bit with you all about this evening. And so they focus on culture, learning, recruitment, our policies and practices in the community, and partnership. And so I'll just quickly go over our five goals. So our, our goal around culture is to create and sustain an organizational environment that acknowledges and celebrates diversity. And so as everyone leaves this evening, we have a Black History Month display to celebrate Black History Month. Every month, we're facilitating all types of events on the campuses as well as the system level to really give our community access to the various dimensions of diversity. And so the team is working collectively to provide, provide that, but we also want to keep a pulse on our culture, and so there's just a variety of different things that we've done around culture since we've been established. The second goal is around learning, and so in addition to the programs that my colleague Melissa Hinchshaw shared, we partner to advance equity as a part of our cultural beliefs, and so we support organizational development by facilitating professional development and learning opportunities for our faculty as well as our staff. And so we partner with organizational development to deliver that, but we also partner with our professional development staff, and so we're supporting all of the faculty and service days, and there's a variety of ways that we support learning so that we can cultivate that. So we don't have the, the data that says that our, you know, we've got number for number in terms of diversity demographics, but we can create cultural competencies within, within us as staff and faculty as well as our students. The third piece, which has, I know, been a board discussion and many events, is around recruitment. And so our goal is to achieve a more diverse employee composition to be reflective of our diverse student and community population. And so the way we do that is we focus on outreach and recruitment, making sure that we're doing targeted outreach, making data-informed decisions, and so really looking at, are we doing, are we effectively recruiting externally in Lone Star and identifying diverse pool of candidates so that we have diversity in the start? So before we bake the cake, are we, are we making sure that we've got all of the ingredients to ensure success? But then also supporting, making sure that we're supporting the search committee process and search advocacy. And so there's just been a very, a variety of initiatives that we've, we've done to move the needle, and I wanted to just share some data that I believe I shared when I first came on board related to the faculty diversity and just the trend. I mean, I think that this, as you can, you can see in that slide I shared at the top of the presentation, that's where we have the greatest amount of opportunity. Since 2015, the head count of diverse faculty has increased by 21%. And so that's about 73 diverse faculty that's increased, and so every year, we're increasing the, the faculty, the diversity of the faculty, and that's just been a substantial increase over, over the past six or seven years. Some of the other things that we're doing, just looking ahead, looking at how we can support the search committee, creating diversity profiles, and so we're looking at our historical trends around hiring, as well as just looking at the, and this is a process that actually started under, under the Chief Operating Officer, in terms of looking at data, looking at our. in terms of looking at data, looking at our, our, our pool of candidates and making sure that they're diverse and what's happening throughout the process. And if, if there are things that we can make sure that we're being more effective at increasing diversity. But we can do targeted recruitment, and so we've identified places where we can identify candidates for them to apply. And so we can diversify our pools. We've also talked about targeting, you know, emerging faculty, encouraging folks right out of graduate school when they graduate with their masters to come into teaching in the community college level. And so one of the things that is in the horizon is establishing a star faculty program for emerging faculty or possibly faculty that have been in an adjunct and haven't necessarily had the opportunity to teach full-time. One of the things that we've collaborated with, and I want to share this commercial with you, is a part of our recruitment campaign, our recruitment campaign for the spring, we collaborated with our marketing department, Lisa Olson, as well as our, our HR leader, Patricia Wood and her team and the recruitment team to, to really promote Lone Star as a place to work. And so I want to share this commercial that's on air through early March, I believe. I'll confirm that with Lisa, but I think early March. And so we wanted to share how we're really encouraging Lone Star as the place to be.
Houston, the city of the future, the future of energy, space exploration, and medical advancement. At Lone Star College, we know that diversity and community are at the forefront of success. They are the foundation in which we shape today's learners into tomorrow's leaders. And when you are ready to take your next career steps, make working at Lone Star College your future. You can make tomorrow happen in an award-winning workplace. Lone Star College isn't just the future of education, it's the future of your career. So let's start it today.
And so we, we, as I said, we worked in partnership with marketing and HR. We wanted to make sure that we, we illustrated the diversity of, of our faculty and staff here at Lone Star College. And so really proud that most of the, or all of the individuals that you saw in there were Lone Star College faculty and staff. So really excited about that. The other is policies and practices. So it's really important that we build an infrastructure to sustain policies and practices that effectively support progress and diversity goals, equitable outcomes, and inclusive culture. And so we launched last year a diversity action committee that is chaired by the chancellor so that the, these individuals across the system can give advice to myself and the chancellor on things that we need to do. I know that we've talked, the chancellor and others that presented on the, our QEP, which is our Quality Enhancement Plan. And so as a part of that, we have an Equity Institute. And so we are working to develop competencies in our, in our tutors, advisors, as well as our professors and faculty. And then engaging in, in campus culture and working in concert with, with Dr. Head to make sure that we've got inclusive, inclusive practices. And so that's really important. The fifth goal that I'd like to share is really about community and partnerships, and so facilitating and initiating partnerships. Lone Star College, because we have such a diverse student demographic, we have companies and corporations that are approaching our corporate college and our workforce development program. They're looking for Lone Star students to come work for them. And so we've got partnerships with NOV, Dell. I just had a conversation with Cisco. They're looking to Lone Star because we, we produce quality students, we produce diverse students. And so our office works in partnerships with various areas within the college. We also partner with non-for-profit and business organizations on community impact initiatives and projects. And so Dr. Head mentioned the disparity study. The supplier diversity area joined my team earlier this year. And we're partnering with chambers of commerce. Chambers of commerce have businesses, and those businesses have jobs for, you know, jobs for our, our students. But those, those chambers of commerce also have constituents, diverse constituents as well, and it creates that partnership with us. And so those are some of the initiatives that we're doing around community and partnerships. And so one of the ways that we, we, we put this into action and we, we, we look at our annual cycle of effectiveness is through diversity action plans. And so as, as, as the system has invested in campus diversity managers, each of those campus diversity managers, when they went onto their campuses, they go through a listen, learn, and leave. And so they cultivate diversity action plans based on what they're hearing from the stakeholders in their, their communities. And so we'll be doing our first progress report as a part of our annual cycle of effectiveness later this month. But those diversity action plans are on, on public sites and all of those campus websites. And it's a way for us to track our progress, the activities, and the folks that we're impacting throughout the college. So again, before, before I wrap up, I just want to share some of the challenges anticipating, that I anticipate, you know, you know, in the horizon. And so one of the things that we're looking to is, is, is we look to, to be a model institution around diversity, equity, inclusion, is benchmarking data. And so that's a tremendous opportunity for us. We've got, we've been thinking about different ways. We've been looking at what other institutions are tracking. And so it's an opportunity for us, and it may require that we have an investment in infrastructure. The other is around faculty recruitment, you know, you know, you, you know, as, as we look to diversify the staff, it's important that we are connecting, connecting with folks, but it's also a challenge for us to, you know, we're not, we're not hiring. It's aspirational that we're doing, doing this, so we're not, we don't have any affirmative action or mandates around hiring. But it's really important for us to, to be conscientious about how we can recruit and we can target so that we can get those folks into our, our, our pool. And then the other big one, and I know that I've heard this discussed in previous board meetings, is equitable student outcomes. And so we've created the, we've created our QE, our QEP plan, which is focused on student outcomes. But we still find a challenge with our African-American males and, and their success rates. And, and, and so it's really important. And so those are things and issues that we're working to tackle over this next year.
Just while you're there, so the QEP is the Quality Enhancement Plan, which we required to submit as part of our accreditation. So it's basically a project that we want to work on, and that's under Dr. Smith, but, and Kalisha is working with that. But we have identified, I mean, the number one problem that we have in terms of student success is African-American males. Clearly, that's a problem, and, and it doesn't start with us. It's down below, but that's, so we can help a lot of those students. What, I mean, being the president at three different locations here, those students can be successful if we help them. But it takes a lot of help and tutoring and advising and the faculty helping, and everybody has to contribute. So that's our focus right now. And we especially see that there's even a bigger gap in online. And so a lot of the students want to take online classes. There's even a bigger gap there. So we'll have more data for you soon, because I'm looking at what happened this past fall and see how that works. But I'll show you what we're talking about. I, I know that we can, we are making progress. And I'm looking over, the reason I'm pointing to you, Quentin, because we're making progress down at Houston North. And I see the progress, what we do when we get focused over that. That's why we created that. So we'll get back with you on the data. I just want to make sure that you know what a QEP is. So, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes trustee Pierce.
Um, uh, thank you, Ms. Wright. That was a great report. And it appears from the data, and I've been doing my own research, that Lone Star has a sixty percent student minority population, and, oh, close to it, I think. And I'm, and I, I applaud your efforts. Now, I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of what I've been bringing up forever. And that's why black females occupying top-level positions, vice chancellors and presidents of colleges at Lone Star, there are none. So all these efforts that we're making, it's great with the students. The faculty is great. You have a few minority, I guess, deans. But I want to make sure, this is my thing, black women, and I've said it again, are the largest, most educated group in this country. Yet, I've been saying this for two years, I still, I have not seen in three years not one African-American female who sits at the top of Lone Star's administrative system. I don't know one vice chancellor who's African-American female. I don't know one college president who's an African-American female. Now, if we want to talk about diversity, let's talk about it. I don't want to win the dress. I'm not here to win the dress. I'm here to bring up the facts. These are the facts. Now, if all of our diversity benchmarks, all of our diversity data, if none of this is going to lead to the very top, then it's not doing us any benefit, because your own motto was, if they see it, they can be it. Let's not lose sight of that. I, I think you're doing a great job from where you are. And, and Ms. Wright, that is not your, I mean, your responsibility is not to hide. That's the chancellor to recommend and the board to approve. The buck stops with us. But I'm just saying, you're doing a great job where you are, and, and it's not about you. I think you're doing a fabulous job. But I still want to make the public and Lone Star aware that you do not have any black females at the very top of this echelon. And to me, that's very discouraging, is very disparaging, and it negates anything that Lone Star is trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Trustee Sullivan, did you have a?
Yes, sir, I did. Thank you for recognizing me. Wanted to thank you for your work that you've done. I had the pleasure of watching Ms. Wright when I was on Houston City Council. You were brought in in two thousand and eleven. And my staff and office worked with you on issues. We were always satisfied with the quality of work and the dedication that you had to the cause. And when you were hired, I complimented Dr. Head on bringing you aboard. I had nothing to do with it. It was entirely his call, of course. He's much smarter than I am in picking talent, but we're just fortunate to have you here, leading this initiative. And along the lines of what you mentioned, you talked about interns. And I'm going to look at Dr. Gonzalez, because just today Christina Cabral approached me at the Greater Houston Partnership Luncheon, said she's going to reach out to you about interns, because the interns that she's had from Lone Star before were extraordinary. Now Christina was just hired as Executive Director of TAG Houston Transportation Advocacy Group. So she'll be in touch with Dr. Gonzalez, who knows her. But the reputation that we have, that makes me feel good when I'm out in public and someone says, your interns are valuable. We want some more, and that means a lot.
And I just want to say, excuse me, I just want to say you are doing a good job, and if there's anything you need, you let us know.
Thank you. Thank you.
You, you probably opened up a can of worms with your last statement, because she always wants. You know, I got a can of Big Mac more, more money is what, yes.
All right. Moving along, so did I ever hear a motion to approve the minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two workshop and regulars meeting? Motion, please, to approve. One motion, and here a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry. All those opposed? And the motion passed. Uh, any special reports or announcements, Chancellor?
Yes, I've got a couple of updates. One is our enrollments for the spring were positive. We had the, for official day, which is when we get the credit, that's the twelfth class day. And so we were up two point seven, almost three percent in students, and we were a little over three percent in credit hours and contact hours, which is where we get the money locally and from the state. And I think we finally turned the tide, I think, from COVID. And so we're still not where we were in two thousand and eighteen. Remember, we had a brief, after the hurricane hit, we went up and then we went down. And then as a result of having Kingwood pretty much out of business for the better part of a year, and then we had COVID. So I'm pleased with that. Keep in mind that despite the fact that we were down about four percent in the last couple of years, I think a total of four percent, but we had one of the lowest declines of anybody. Most of the area is, went down, and most of the big schools in the state went down fifteen to twenty percent. So I, I think we're moving, I don't think, I know we're moving in the right direction now. I'm not surprised. I thought it was a matter of time. So I, I think that that's a positive sign. Another, a cou- a couple of events, we had the Law Enforcement Academy graduation. And trustee Maria was there. That's the first Law Enforcement Academy graduation that we've had. And several years after the, we reconstituted the Law Enforcement Academy. We had ten graduates. Every one of them has a job, had a job. They, they, they had jobs when they graduated. And so their next class, and this is off identities to all dean center, the next class will have twenty-eight in it. And so I'm, I'm very pleased with, and, and you, you, if you get the chance, you might go and see what they're, what they're talking about in the training that they have, because it's a, a modern day, and it's what we expect out of our officers, which we do a great job here also. But it's just modern-day policing, what you're going to face out there, the issues, how to deal with people, how you deal with diversity. So I'm, I'm very pleased with that. The, a couple of weeks ago, we had a ceremony. We received three hundred and forty thousand dollars from the Texas Workforce Commission, and trustee Kane was there. And. Oh, 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 trust, sorry, trustee Bressard. I was thinking, I was looking, who's trustee Bressard? We, we had a number of events, and so, so, geez. Yeah, that'll be the first and only time I make that mistake. So next time I'll write it down. They, they, we have a great relationship with TWC, Texas Workforce Commission, that the chair came down, Brian Daniel, which is very unusual. And so they, we work very closely with TWC. I, I actually think they're one of the top-performing state agencies in terms of our relationship and, and how they help us. In this particular case, the grant was to help us with placement, job placement. So I was very, very pleased with that. And then we had another, we opened up the Metro stop over at Fallbrook. And let me make sure you were there.
Yeah, I was there.
And. And, and trustee Salivar was there. You weren't there, right? Okay. So it's pretty cool, because what we're trying to do over there is provide opportunities for everybody and transport. I told the group, so the top two issues for us and our students is finances and then transportation. That's the top two issues. Now, once they get in the classroom, it's a different, but I'm just talking about the issues they face going to school. So, and thank you for making that happen. And the last thing is that I had, so in the legislature, the, the Finance Commission proposed six hundred and fifty million. That's what we were asking for. Well, in the first go-around of the budgets, that's exactly what they put in there. And normally, and, which is a really good sign. And so that means they took the amount and the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the Speaker of the House, and Senator Creighton and anybody else dealing with that, they had agreed to that amount. So, which was really unusual. Usually, if you're asking for, we were trying to be realistic about it. If you're asking for six hundred and fifty, they'll give you trustee Sullivan, they'll give you two fifty. And go, well, you're lucky to get that, and then it might be cut down from that. But I'm, it has major implications for us, I think. I think that it's, most of us are going to be based on performance funding, which we already have embedded in our system now. Jennifer and I were talking today about this, Jennifer Mott, we need to, we need to work on this. But I think this is exactly, this is exactly what I think we ought to be doing, which you get paid on results, not just be given money. I'm a taxpayer here too, but so we'd like to be paid on results, the number of graduates you have, the number of dual credits, the number of transfers, or the workforce, different workforce programs that you have. You would get, you would get paid on results, and the number of people that you turn out instead of just bringing them in. So I'm, I'm optimistic about that. So we have a lot of work in front of us, so we'll see what happens with the legislature. But I'm, so far, so good. And that concludes my remark.
All right. Anything from the faculty senate, or not to my, any other board members have any reports, anything that you'd like to?
Chairman, if I can kind of follow up with some of the comments.
Trustee Maria, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, it was, it was amazing. A couple of events you mentioned, and I was very pleased to have the opportunity to experience the, the big part. First of all, the, the Law Enforcement Academy, you know, I had followed the efforts to, to, to open it up again. And the best part about it really, when, when, when you witness these graduations, I mean, we love graduations. We're a college, right? But the message from the instructors to the students, you know, you can just sense the pride and, and the commitment to their duty, to their task. And at times of these, and, and today, as, as we experienced, you know, this week, I guess, an unfortunate situation involving law enforcement, you know. I, I, I can, I can assure you that just simply being in that room with a, we are, with our instructors and, and their students, that our folks there understand the responsibility of their job. I mean, just the, the men, they articulated. they articulated the mission, their, their goal as law enforcement officials. And so I just, just, I don't know how to, how to better articulate that, but it is a strong commitment. And thank you, Dr. Head, for making, for this to happen, you know, for, for us to be able to do this in our community, being able to offer this opportunity because, you know, expand access to this, this training, this service. And the other one, of course, I'm also very excited of the fact that we now have the Lone, Lone Star College Connector. It's a big deal. And Dr. Wright, you know, I already commended you for having the drive for the insights. Anytime anybody provides us data about students and all that, you know, we're going to be watching that. And, and I think, you know, community engagement is critical to, to any institution, especially in for colleges and for metro. And on January twenty-second, twenty-fourth, we, we celebrated the launch through, through celebration, through ribbon cutting at Fallbrook Campus, Houston, Houston North Fallbrook Campus. And our, our board chair, Sanjay Ramaupadran was there, and our president, CEO. And you know, and we're excellent. You're an excellent ambassador. All our staff was an ambassador about the mission of Lone Star College. And that particular college, you described it so elegantly, so, so well. And it really pointed, it really, really clarified the goal of transit and of education. You know, I think if I can quote you, Dr. Head, if we can get them there, we can get, we can at least give them the opportunity to be successful. You know, being able to provide affordable options to access opportunities, including work, right? A lot of people don't realize that, you know, they're limited sometimes, but their inability to have transportation. And Metro, we really try to educate the public, try to encourage them to look at options, you know, not, you don't have to write Metro, and not everybody has access to it. But, but by expanding access, you expand opportunities. The, in this particular route, which is six and a half miles, and near the campus, that runs Monday through Saturday from seven thirty to seven thirty a.m. to seven thirty p.m. And connects to the Walmart in that area. And in the Fallbrook Church is an incredible partner for us with a program with the school, but for Metro as well. So I know I'm a transit geek, so I'm a little excited about the fact that, and I think I told you, this is a big deal, to be able to have a major transit agency commit. I know it is a pilot project. I know I mentioned that, but, but it is a big deal. I'm very proud of our, our staff. I'm not going to mention everybody because I don't all miss somebody, but they, you know who you are. You know, whether it's our marketing team or community engagement team, they really made us proud. That the, you'll hear more about it, let me put it that way, but, but it really show, it was a great showcase, highlighted what we do best. And to have our, our presidency or our chair or sprint tenant, I mean, our chancellor, okay, and your different title now. I think it was awesome. So, so to be continued. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Kane, I'm sorry.
Just like to follow up briefly on the comments that the chancellor made about the grant, the Texas Talent Connection Grant for just under three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Several things struck me about that. The focus, as you have mentioned, on first generation students who are pursuing various certifications, specifically in manufacturing, automotive, IT, business, visual communications, and healthcare. That's going to make a huge difference in the lives of those students. And so I'm absolutely delighted that we received that grant. And I want to thank all the folks who helped put that grant together, because that, that's, that's a big deal and a game changer for many, many people.
All right, sir. Any other comments by trustee? Then I have a couple. I would like to talk a little bit about the future and where we're going, because I think this board will make decisions, will have deliberations and make decisions that are presented. It will set the direction of this college system for years to come. And I think we, we need to contemplate on that, each one of us. So what I'm proposing and what I'm, what I'm doing as chair is I'm, I'm writing, I'm raising as a banner, you know. Going back to the time of Rome and before, when, when armies marched into battle, even myself being a veteran, you know, whenever we, we mustered to, to march forward, we always had a guide. The guide was the first person to stand in line, first person to muster up. He would hold a, a large staff, and at the top of the staff were our colors, our banner. And everybody would align to that guide. And then we, we marched forward in unison. I mean, there's nothing to me, nothing more emotional for me than that marching, a large parade, military parade. And it's, it was just breathtaking. So what I'm doing with these guiding principles is I'm raising them up as our guidance board. As we move forward in our discussions and our deliberations and the decisions we have to make, and we're going to make some tough decisions, we need to keep in mind these values. And I'm not going to read them all. You all know them. They're parts of codes of ethics and codes of conduct that you find in almost any commercial, educational, governmental policies. But they are a banner to move forward. And the one, I'm going to call one out because it, it really rings to me is that's intention. I move forward with everyone in my life, and everybody I come in contact with, assuming they have good intentions. And until they demonstrate otherwise, I believe that's the case. I believe man is good, you know. Yes, we have evil to deal with, but man is good. And with that assumption, with that belief, you can build trust, and you can build respect, and you can work as a team, and we have to work as a team in this, these coming next two years. And because we're going to set, we're going to set the staff here for this college system. So I'm holding these up, and I'm asking not only the board members, but everyone here, you know, adopt these as we move forward. As you move forward in lies, as you, as you lead the campuses, as, as you teach the students, as you do your job as staff, you know, raise these high in your mind and, and march by theirs. And we indeed will be in unison as we move forward. So these are our guiding principles. I, I've requested that at the beginning of each board meeting going forward, that we will show this slide. I'm not going to say much about it, but just to remind us, here's, here's where we're going. Now, remind us that this is why we're here. And we're going to go forward and create some history, Chancellor. We're going to create some history, buddy. I'd like to move on to one of the subjects and another procedure I'm implementing as chair is to have the, what I'm calling the Chair's Issues List. This is where any trustee can offer up any issue. And I will take, and Melissa, our, our, our board counsel has agreed to help me track these. I will take these issues and assure that you have conclusion to these issues. So if there's issues that need to be solved, that we have a solve or at least a, a path to solution. So nothing, nothing is dropped. And it's important that things that come up in meetings, sometimes I know in the last four, four, over four years I've been here, that things will come in meetings, and you just don't know where the resolution is or what's happened and such. Well, in this, in my, while I'm in the seat, we're going to track these, and we're, we're going to make sure that issues are addressed and that, you know, we come to resolution or conclusion on those issues. Now, that doesn't stop any trustee, certainly. I mean, you, you're elected officials, you can do what you wish. You have the rights to pursue things as, as your judgment calls. But I'm just telling as, as the chair, I'm taking, I'm willing to take the responsibility to help move these issues forward and, and get resolution so, so we can continue to progress in our, in our march, in our journey. I sent, I've sent you detailed communications on this. I'm not going to go over the details of that. If you have any issues, you can direct them to me, and we will go forward. Now, with that, there is one issue that we, we had from the December meeting. And I think it, in my notes, trustee, you brought that issue up, and it's regarding, I guess, the flood, flood plane or flood plane organizations or organization. You, you had the, I'm sorry, Jennifer, you had the follow-up, I think, on that, about the. Okay, so we're going to cover that there. So she has an answer for your, your issue. And let her, I'll let her cover it there. She's going to do a much better job than I can, I can tell you, on that one. So that's the Chair's Issue Issues List. Let's see. I got one or two other things here. I've got one issue that I want to add, which I have, I have also distributed a very, and fun, I'm a note. Bear with me just a second. I'll just speak to it. I have one issue I had raised regarding a student, who is now a student, prospective student who tried to enroll or attempted to enroll in a workforce program. Journey started for this student after, the week after Christmas. Okay, finally decided to take action. And the student was, first went to Montgomery College, then he went to Houston North. He was sent to Houston North. He was sent to, to North Harris. And it was unclear as to what the finance policies are, getting financial aid for a workforce student. And as our brochure states, is that for these work programs, they can get their tuition, their fees, their books, you know, a hundred percent covered indeed if they qualify. Okay? So this didn't quite happen very smoothly, and, and I'm not going into the details of it. I'm not going to entertain discussion on tonight, but I want to give a report on what's happened. Thanks to Chief Counsel Castillo, he has done a thorough investigation of what happened in this incident. He has very detailed findings in regards to what happened. And he has some recommendations on process improvement. And I want to say, the way I look at things here, any place, really any business, because I've been helping corporations reengineer for many years now, we need to look at things from a, a perspective of process improvement, because Lone Star is the best. Let's be, let's be honest, it's the best in Texas. It's a leader in the United States. But you know, the best only stays the best if they improve on what they do, because it's not, somebody else is going to do it better. So, you know, I challenge everyone, you know, from staff to instructor, and, and is to look for ways to do things better. Look for ways to improve the processes, your work processes. It may be, you know, doing things just simply different, and small steps. It could be, you know, major steps in proposing, you know, technology. And certainly, I challenge the presidents, because you, you are the quality officers of this district. You are. You, you enforce the educational standards here. And it's up to you to, to, it's your responsibility to see that quality education is delivered out to, to our students and constituents. So I challenge you to look at your own operations and, and, and come up with innovative ways and, and reward innovation. I'm sure you've got some innovative programs. We don't know all of them, but reward innovation, because that's where it's going to come from. No matter if it's staff or faculty or administration, no matter what the roles are, that's where you keep your competitive advantage, as I say. That's where we, we stand to be the best and stay the best. So following on, Chief Counsel Castillo has agreed to prepare a briefing for the, for the board on the specific issue. Because of its, its confidential nature, it won't be shared publicly, but he will brief us either at the February twenty-fourth workshop or at the, at the next board meeting. But action has been taken. I want to say significant findings have been uncovered. And there is a, at least an identification of improvements that can be made. And then, then of course, the next step is to have a plan to do those, which is your charge, sir. But that's, that's my intent in taking these issues. And, and, and we need to drive the issues to conclusion. So that's, that's that. I wanted to shift to committees. By, by policy, by board policy, we're required in, in policy, i.e. one, I dot E dot one dot zero four subsection B, we're required to name an audit committee. This is the only committee named in board policy that we have to name. It's up to the chair to name a three-person committee that serves for the two years until we reorganize again. That's what the policy says. And so we've had need of this committee prior to this meeting, so I have appointed that committee. I've appointed, I've asked trustee Sullivan to act as chair of that. He's, he's agreed to do it. And the reason I've asked him, one, he's served in that position before, and he's done an excellent job. He has a background in, in city finance and, 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 and county government finance. He's well qualified to, to sit this position. I've asked also trustee Kane, trustee Kane, in his, what, thirty-plus years as superintendent at Klein Schools, has certainly dealt with budgets and auditors, internal auditors, external auditors. So I've asked trustee Kane, and he's agreed to serve on this committee. And I myself will serve on this committee. In my background, I've implemented many corporate financial systems, commodity trading systems. I've dealt with internal and external auditors based on the different laws that apply. So I will serve on that committee, and that's the rationale in, in choosing these, these gentlemen and myself to step up to do this. The way I want to do other committees, you know, in the past, we've named committees and they've served for two years. I want to try something different. And we're going to take the, the policy review committee. Normally, we would name members to that committee, and they would serve for two years. We're, we're going to do things different this time. And we'll try it. And if it doesn't work, we'll do, we'll do things different way. But what I'm going to do is, based on the policy that comes forward, and we have one policy today that we need to consider, I will assign it out to different committees. We may have several policy committees going at one time. We're, we're going to take baby steps at first at this, though. And then, and the reason I'm doing this is, one, I want each trustee to have the opportunity to serve and considering policy and policy changes for the system. I want participation. If you want to participate, you can participate as much as you want. And also, I think it leverages the diversity that we have on this board. We have a diverse board. We talked about diversity. So that's, that's the big reason that I want, I want to do. And also, I want to expedite the consideration of policy. Sometimes policies have set for a year, year or more. And we need to expedite policies. You know, basically, we have three different policies. We have administrative policies, which is usually brought about by law or regulation and, or by the administration, because they need to streamline their, their procedures or processes, which is where this fits in, and what I'm about to, to, to explain. There is the policies that come from, from outside, like the ladies who testified earlier about the Homestead extension, want to raise the Homestead extension. I thought that would be a policy change. And then there's those policy changes were recommended by trustees, whatever, whatever you would bring forward, as you would say. So as they come forward, then I will most likely ask for volunteers. Now, for this particular policy change, which I have, you know, to bear with me, I find that. You know, I've become disorganized up here. The policy change deals with essentially raising the spending limit that the chancellor has from one level to another. And, and the purpose of, of considering this change is, one, so we can, he can better execute, the chancellor can better execute the day-to-day operations of the system. And two, to really condense our consent agenda items down to give us more time to discuss issues and other things that come forth. To give us more time to discuss issues and other things that come forth. I have asked. In this case, I've, again, I've asked trustee Sullivan to lead. This committee. I've asked trustee Broussard to serve in this committee, which she has agreed to do. And it's, it's no, you know, you're new, but you might as well get your feet wet and get on with it, right? And I need one more person, I need one more volunteer, if you will, to serve on this committee, and I ask you, and now if not, I'll, I'll draft you later. You know. Trustee Kane, would you like to serve on that committee as well, okay, trustee Kane? Will serve on that committee. So my charge, trustee Sullivan, is for the next board meeting in March. Would you have a report on, on your, your progress with that? We certainly, it, it would be good if we could expedite it, I'm not pushing you though, you guys decide. And we'll go on your recommendation and the board will consider it. And. Chief, chief counsel, would you please distribute the copies of the, of the policy and changes to the committee persons? And also, what, would it be an issue just to distribute it to the, to all trustees, would that be appropriate? No, okay, well, don't do that then. It wouldn't be, okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood. So would you just do that, just distribute it to, to all, the changes to all trustees, so they have it? And they can, they can, you know, raise issues to the committee that's considering this. And we'll go from there, and we'll look for a report in March, if you would, sir. Okay. I think that's all I had, isn't that too much? All right. So the next on the agenda is our consent agenda, considering the consent agenda, I do believe. Do I have any requests to pull the items for specific discussion? Oh, that's good. God bless you all. So, then I'm gonna raise. Ask for a motion to approve consent agenda items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, ten, eleven, thirteen and fourteen. So do I have a motion to approve those consent agenda items? We have one move, a second?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor of passing these items indicate by, say nigh. Any opposed?
Us, Chair Stoma, trustee Pierce would like to abstain, and I want the record to reflect. That trustee Pierce is abstaining from voting to approve the fuller consent agenda, my reason being. That the documentations presented in the action items are not clearly justified for an appropriate vote, thank you.
And so, so let's do a roll call vote on this. All those, let me just say, roll call vote, trustee Kane?
Aye.
Trustee Maria?
Aye.
Trustee vote?
Aye.
Trustee Broussard?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Abstain.
And I, trustee Stoma, aye. So the motion passes. Financial report, I think, personnel, there's no personnel considerations, are there? Uh, financial report then.
Good evening, trustees, thank you. I have for everyone tonight, the financial report for the current fiscal year month ending December thirty-first, twenty-two. First here on the revenues, you can see as a percentage, well, so first in actuals, we have collected a hundred and eighty-seven million. In revenues compared to the budgeted revenues of four hundred and twenty-two million, that is forty-four point three percent. Of the budgeted revenues for the fiscal year. You can see how this percentage compares to prior years and we are pretty much at the, on a percentage basis at the same place. That we were at the same point in time last year. And so, and so with that, I think that is a, a good sign for hitting our budgeted revenues at the end of the year. As far as expenditures, we have spent so far a hundred and twenty-one million in expenditures compared to a budget of four hundred and nine million. And there you will see that is twenty-nine point seven percent of the budgeted expenditures. And that does continue to trend lower than where we have stood in prior years, so that does indicate. That by the end of the year, that potentially an expenditure level of something less than the budgeted amount. But again, everyone has still that full budget authority, so we will continue to watch this as we continue through the year. This chart here shows, so the forecasted budget, budget variance, as you can see so far, we are not forecasting a variance yet. That is something I hope to have a forecasted variance for the board at the March board meeting. Because at this point in time in prior years, when we had fall enrollments, we would show the forecasted impact of that. And then subsequently layer in the forecasted variance as a result of spring. In this particular year, in, in fall, we did have a decline in enrollments. But now here, spring, just recent is we are up, and so. I would like to have for the March board meeting, what is the, our net forecast of both of our major terms? For the fiscal year to be able to share that as well. And so same thing with these forecasted variances, this is where we were gonna have an additional conversation at the board retreat later this month. To begin also discussing the, the forecast for this current fiscal year and the outline for next year's budget. So yes, so a short monthly report this month, with certainly much more to come in the future on that. Cuz I really wanted to be able to focus on, I hope, answering trustee vote's question as far as flood mitigation plans. It was a few months ago that I did a workshop showing what was. Our own flood mitigation risks and projects at our Lone Star College locations. So this is adding to that additional information on what are the flood mitigation plans from other agencies in our area. Do you have a disclaimer here that we have done our best to get the statuses of what the plans are of other agencies? But we cannot personally necessarily represent the, the full status of those. Projects that are the responsibility of other agencies. But, so the information that we have gathered here, first I wanted to share the agencies that we had contacted. Certainly throughout the whole region, there are many agencies that could potentially impact flood mitigation. But we, we definitely contacted City of Conroe, City of Magnolia, the San Jacinto River Authority, Tech Dot. The Woodlands Water and the Harris County Flood Control District. So as you can see here for the first three, as far as we are able to tell, there are currently no flood mitigation plans in place there. But there certainly are flood mitigation plans in place by Tech Dot that could impact the Montgomery campus. From Woodlands Water that could impact System Office and Harris County Flood Control District, of course, that is a large agency that could impact many of our locations. So, one project to mention that is being worked on up at Montgomery through Tech Dot. Tech Dot is working on an expansion of a portion of. Two forty-two, right there, running in front of that campus. Along with that project is Tech Dot had already, has already approached us about building additional detention on our campus. And so, and it, our own Lone Star College project is, we have also been working on a project to turn. What is currently the third entrance, entrance number three of Montgomery into the main entrance for that campus. And so we are working to coordinate that project with Tech Dot to do both at the same time. In terms of coordinating turn signals, but then also coordinating the, the development of that road as the main entrance to that campus along with. The detention, the discussion right now is to build that detention in the, the larger green box of the two boxes.
So Jennifer, just for the board, for the, for a frame of reference. The, the campus, the east side of the camp, the west side of the campus is over on the green box, that's, that's a, the road that you see. Immediately to the left is the road into the campus. And it goes all the way across, and so we had a meeting with Tech Dot that. Actually trustee Sullivan helped us with that, so we talked with them about where to put the retention pond. And so the place that we prefer is where the big, big boxes behind the trees there. Which we don't have any plans to use that area back there, they're gonna put a detention pond in there, I mean, we wanna work with them, but we, we want them to work with us also. And then we were changing that entryway, that would be the main entryway. And if you've not been over there before, the, the flyover cuts, cuts us off on that, what used to be the main. So we, this is an issue that we've inherited and. We can't move on this until Tech Dot is expanding two forty-two, that's the problem we have over there, so we're working with them and we'll start on that soon. But I just wanna make sure you, you know what we're talking about there, it's the area from the big box on the left all the way across over there. And we've been looking at different options, so that's an ongoing project, we think that's the best solution, is the big box.
And then with that cooperation with Tech Dot also allows us to have in-depth conversations about how that affects the aesthetics. Of the campus and we're working hard to keep a significant barrier, like a ring of trees around this detention pond. I, I think ideally with the detention pond not being visible from the road and still having it be the visibility of those trees.
You know, they also, they also wanna work with us on the way the entryway looks and the road in there, which is important to us. Because that's a heavy traffic flow, we wanna make sure our students are safe when they come in. For example, they're gonna build a, a turn lane in there, so you can pull off and get over there, if you're over there now, you'll know what I'm talking about, it's. If you're gonna take a turn, you've gotta get in the, really on the, off the main road to do that, so I, I think over the long term it'll be fine. It doesn't, it just takes a while, we're moving at their pace. In case those of you at Montgomery are wondering what's going on, we're waiting on, we're moving at their pace, I'll put it that way.
So the other flood mitigation project being worked on is through the Woodlands Water Agency. They have, so the Bear and Panther Creek Drainage System Improvement Project. They've been collecting data, working with, there's ten different muds in the woodlands to complete a new, new model. And then with that model, develop a plan for that area of Bear and Panther Creek. So a proposal that they had already submitted to us. Was to build an additional detention pond. On the system office location here, towards that project. And so that is something that agency, as you see, they've secured funding through the Texas Water Development Board. And I'm going to the next slide, cuz this is where it shows a map, so you see in, in orange outline is our property here at System Office. You can see we, we do own a significant amount of land actually behind all of these facilities. And in yellow is where the proposed detention area would be, so similarly here. Cooperating with them will allow us to have, you know, be part of the conversation of the aesthetics of how that looks. And this would be again for improving the drainage systems here in the woodlands in that Bear and Panther Creek.
Doesn't impact, I don't think any short, long-term plans at all, most of that area back there is in the, in the flood area, in the flood plain. And if you go back there after a heavy rain, that's where the water flow is anyway, it's a very low area, about the only thing back there are. Feral hogs and wildlife, which they can move a little bit if they need to, but mostly, when it, when it rains like it does. If you just go down the road, you can see the water runs through the backside, it doesn't, I don't, aesthetically or operationally or anything else, it doesn't impact us. So, but when we purchased this, that was just part of the whole package, because I couldn't use it for anything else. We couldn't put a building back there, let's put it that way.
Yeah, we actually did build a fence. Behind all of the facilities here into the woods, because the feral hogs were coming all the way up and getting into. The grounds and landscaping here right near our buildings here, so.
I've seen bobcat, we've got all kind of creatures back there, so. Raccoon, you have to tell the employees to not feed the animals, please, don't do that, cuz they, then they think this is free food here.
So finally, Harris County Flood Control District, of course, this is a large agency that does have many projects in the works at any one time. They currently have forty-four active projects across the city of Houston. Their primary concentration right now is projects in the Attix Reservoir watershed. And so of course, a lot of this is to address what we all have seen happen during Harvey and everything. As these projects proceed, so their projects, I mean, Harris County Flood Control District having so many active projects. These are certainly gonna impact a much larger area throughout our entire system. And so each one has its own watershed, and so included a table here to show for every one of our site. What is the associated watershed for each site? In the site, oops. I want one too many, let me go back one, there we go. I know this map is a little bit confusing, but this is a part of the, the deal with, like I said, Harris County Flood Control District being a significant. Agency with forty-four projects, these dust just show projects around the whole area. And so these certainly could have potential impacts on our sites, none of them are physically on any of our sites. But certainly the, the goal of them doing these projects is overall drainage improvement. So, and we will continue to keep an eye on these projects, and of course, like the prior ones, we can brief the board on any directly impacting our sites. And then finally, the last thing to note is that especially after Harvey, the city of Houston, Harris County, Montgomery County. A lot of them did change their permitting requirements for new buildings. So now for city of Houston, for example, the requirement is for the finished floor elevation to be two feet above the five-hundred-year floodplain elevation. Harris County, it's also two feet above the five-hundred-year, Montgomery County, it's one foot above, and so we are. Certainly adhering to that in any new construction design plans that we have in the works. And that is something that those jurisdictions did, like I said, towards flood mitigation of the area. And there's an additional building and grounds report in the agenda, if there are any other questions on any of this. And I, and I hope this adds that additional level of detail trustee vote that you were hoping for.
Would you send me? Your, your. Your, your information here, please?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
Chair, if I may, always have questions, so just look to your right whenever there's a presentation. How much time and what resources were put into this flood? Ask, the aspect of your presentation, and I ask that because. Is, and this is on several boards, not just this board, a lot of times someone will say, I wanna report on this. I wanna know what's going on, you know, in, in, in your role, you're gonna try to satisfy the trustees and get the information. What I think sometimes is lost is the amount of work that goes into the request. And how it may or may not affect your workload, workload of your team, your staff. Internal resources, external resources, kinda walk me through that, if you would, just for a second.
It certainly was the facilities and construction team that worked to put this together, as well as the, the first flood mitigation. Presentation, I will admit, we did not track hours, so I will not be able to honestly give you an answer on how many hours was spent. On this. But I know we did put in good diligence here to contact each of these agencies and make sure we had as complete information as we. Would, would be able to provide.
How long have you been working on this?
I mean, we've been working on this since we received the request. I know first, you know, first really trying to make sure we had a good handle on which agencies were the correct agencies to reach out to and reaching out them. So I'm trying to remember, I think the question was asked when. I'm trying to remember what month it was in the fall that I did the workshop on the flood mitigation. I believe it was October.
I mean, this does take a lot of time, and part of it, we don't quite understand. What we're trying to get, I mean, it's, it's not a matter of us not wanting to do it, that's not it at all, it's like, we're trying to get some clarity over exactly what you're looking for. Cuz you, you, I mean, we have, they have the same problem with me, by the way, when I ask for stuff. I know what I'm looking for, but I don't articulate it very well sometimes, and so it's not just her, it's everybody. I know what I'm looking for, but I don't articulate it very well sometimes. And so it's not just her, it's everybody, but uh, it does take a lot of time, but that's what we do. I mean, that's our job. So I don't, my only request is be patient with us sometime and let us know. We'll give you stuff, and if that's not right, then we'll go back and do it right. So.
And, and I'm, I'm going to say that's one of the reasons I'm implementing this chair's issues list. You know? Let me take it. Let me, let me work with these folks to assess, because that's what I do. Assess what it's going to take and what, what the, how should I say, the benefits are. You know? Uh, certainly I think the whole flood control management here is significant. I mean, we look at Kingwood, right? It's not negative. It's just where it was. It's where everybody inherited. Uh, so I, I urge each of the trustees, when you have issues like this, let me put it on the list. Let me work it for you. And let me work with these folks so they don't uh, so they can make more efficient use of their time. Uh, and, and we get the most benefit out of it. And that's uh, yeah, that's, that's a purpose.
Chair, I think that's the point in my question tonight was because I asked about this months ago. You gave me the information. It satisfied me. But then there was other um, discussion at the board table that more information was needed. And sometimes it's how much, how much more? I mean, really, where, where are we headed? What are we trying to do?
Right.
And you're trying to plan a budget. You're trying to work with the chancellor on projects, and I just see the distraction that it might create. Uh, regardless of the issue, I'm not just picking on this one. And I think it's, I just think we as a, as a board chair, as you mentioned, you know, just kind of taking a look at things. That's one thing I think that is worth looking at is for trustees to me, we're all elected. I know that. And we can all ask for what we want to ask for, and I know that. But I think from a business perspective and respect for the administration and the team members, it might be worth asking ourselves, is this worth bringing up? Is this worth asking? You know, people to drop what they're doing to, to respond to us on their timeline. So I'll let y'all kind of clean it up. I've, I've expressed my, my concerns and my suggestion. Thank you. And Jennifer, good job. Thank you. And thanks to everyone that put it together. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Think perhaps that's all. Uh, we are, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You're actually right. Are there any uh, future agenda items you want to suggest?
Um, Chair, I have a question. Are we going to close session?
Yes, we are. We, we chose to move to closed session after the general session because it's going to be a lengthy discussion.
Okay, I was just checking before I just.
You don't want these folks sitting on us, you know, waiting on us. So we're going to go to a closed session after this meeting is adjourned and discuss what we need to discuss.
Okay.
And to be clear, procedurally, we'll have to adjourn to closed session, then come back and reconvene and then adjourn the open session of the meeting.
So that's what.
That's what I thought, but I was just making sure.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, thank, thanks for Melissa. Keep me honest. Um, so I'm, I'm not a formal guy, as you know. Uh, so any other suggested agenda items? Then with that, I will shall uh, guess adjourn this session to go into a private session and we will reconvene afterwards. If you want to stick around, it's up to you, but I wouldn't. Thanks. I hereby uh, re-adjourn, uh, re-convene, re-adjourn, re-convene, reconvene the uh, open meeting. And uh, I hereby adjourn the open meeting. Uh, yep, on the reconvening, how about eight, ten? How about it? Eight, ten and a half. Thank you. Does that work for you? I'm, I'm sorry. I'm tired of like everybody. Uh, I think that's it, folks. Let's go home.